Bye Kathy.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are now live. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will call to meet the order. Welcome, everybody. Approval of the agenda. Is there any add-ons from any council member? Seeing none, I have a recommendation here that the agenda be approved as presented. Summon to move to put on the floor, please. Moved by Councilor Southern, second by Councilor Coburn. Is there any discussion of motion before us? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, you take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion as presented. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Counselor Kathy Markoburn?
For.
Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Counselor Ryan Thompson is absent. Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you. Declaration of pecuniary interest. You can declare anytime you seek it during the meeting. We have no public hearings here tonight. Oh, Councilor Southern, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I do not wish to declare pecuniary interest. I would like to recognize a potential conflict with the agenda item 5.1 being the presentation from Families for Autism. Due to a personal relationship with a member of the organization, for this reason, during the presentation, I will excuse myself from any conversations.
Thank you. So noted, Madam Clerk. Okay, we have no public hearings. Presentations. And now welcome is Stephanie Serenko, President of Family for Autism, Gray Bruce. Serenko, please go ahead. Are you present? There you are. Floor is yours.
Okay, I think Susan was actually gonna take over and kinda do this presentation. Sorry, I was like waiting. Okay, so Families for Autism is a nonprofit organization in the Gray Bruce. We support families with adults and children on the spectrum. Our main goal is to bring resources to Gray Bruce and make Gray Bruce more inclusive to all. We started this idea after our second annual autism awareness golf tournament that we host every year to raise funds to be able to do like this and to be able to do stuff like this in our community. Our communication boards in our park would not, would help not only children and adults with special needs, but elderly with dementia. These boards are so that the person can express their needs or wants. They can also express how they are feeling and help the individual understand what is available to them in the area. These will help people feel more inclusive and included. So this is an example of our board. Let me see. We will make each board custom to each park so that they have everything available in that area on the board. We currently have boards going up in Aaron eldersly, Meaford, South Bruce Peninsula, and the YMCA Owen Sound. And we are currently works with many other townships as well. Our goal is to see at least five boards go up in Georgian Bluffs area to start. Parks that we are, have of interest are Shell Lake, Fairwax Family Park, Kemble, and Legacy Ridge. These boards will be custom made to suit each park. The boards are donated from Families for Autism. We just ask that the townships install them. And then we are open to any size board that the area needs. So in the future, in their playgrounds and their public sports facilities. We feel like it's important to many families in our local area to have this. I'm just gonna hold up the board as an example again. So individuals are able to just point and make a sentence letting you know what, what they want. This is for non-verbal and even individuals who are verbal but need the help of pictures to communicate.
Madam Clerk, everything is cutting out and I'm not sure where we're at.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
So Mayor Burley, if you'd like to open it up to questions of council, please.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Stephanie, do you have any comments before we open floor up?
Um, I'd just like to add that these are all season, like they will last through our winters and everything that we get here in Gray Bruce, so they will survive that. I also wanted to add that we do have a pot of money for when vandalism and stuff like that does happen to them. So we will be responsible for that. We're doing it with a local company in Owen Sound, Johnny Tint. He's the one that's making our boards. And has donated his time and he's also said if there was any vandalism that he would take care of that as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Does the council have any comments or questions to our presentation? And Madam Clerk, I cannot see, oh, there's one. Deputy Mayor Carlton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. You named off four places and included Legacy Ridge. I'm wondering about out at the Killscythe or Derby Community Center as well? If there would be interest because there will be a new park at some point going in out there.
Definitely, yes.
Yeah, we're open to anything that you guys think would work well in Georgian Bluffs as well.
Might I suggest then, Stephanie, that you have a conversation with our C O and our Director of Operations? And then they can work through the parks and so on where. Mr. C O, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had some preliminary discussions with the group. And we started to identify some of the preliminary sites where the signage can go up and our intent is to work with the group and place as many of the signs as we can throughout the township. Our ultimate goal is to make all of our playgrounds and facilities as accessible as possible, and this certainly moves us one step forward. I think it's a great initiative and something that I would recommend council support wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Al. Is there any other comments from our council? Madam Clerk, I cannot see everybody, so go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just from a procedural standpoint, it would be most appropriate that should council wish to endorse and support this cause, that a notice of motion be provided for consideration at the April 21st council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any council member would like to? Counselor Coburn, are you presenting a notice of motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to provide that notice of motion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So noted. If we know other questions or comments for our presentation. Stephanie and Susan, thanks very much for coming here tonight and we really appreciate it and look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
So I'm gonna move on to the agenda then. We have no delegations. Correspondents. We have, welcome back, Councilor Southern. Correspondents, we have our annual, 2020 annual landfill monitoring report. Steve, I'm gonna turn this over to you. I think everybody has had an opportunity to read them, but do you have any comments?
All right, through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. So every year, we're supposed to bring a report back to council to show the status of what's being monitored at the closed landfill. In 2017, you guys closed the Kappa landfill, which is outside of, in Hepworth there. So this monitoring is basically, it goes through our annual monitoring program and also looks at the environmental monitoring as well as per our certificate of approval. So we're not, we have no issues out there right now and we're in still good shape from our previous closure report. So this is just information. We do have a hard copy and a PDF copy if anybody really wants to review the 197 pages long.
Thank you, Stephen. Does the council have any questions on the report? Deputy Mayor Carlton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, on page six, it kind of caught me that it says, is landfill gas being monitored or controlled at the site? And it says no. And then further down at the bottom of that same page, there's another no answer that seemed to me a little different, and I didn't know if there was a reason for that.
Stephen, go ahead.
So we're talking about the off-gassing here. That's what we're monitoring if, because if we are, our landfill had opening like pipes and stuff, we'd be have to monitoring what was being released into the atmosphere. Because it's capped, there are no emissions coming off the landfill because of the, how much covers over top of it. So that's why they're not monitoring the air. And then the other no that was at the bottom of the page as well is in regards to have, we have any trigger values for contingency plans or site room if, if it's required. So we don't have any contingency plans in place right now because we're not at that point where we're, we fear that we need to have any. So that's why the report was, has a no.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Does council have any other questions on the reports? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I have no recommendation here, so we're just gonna accept this as information?
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. There is a recommendation there to receive the report for information. So if you'd like to call that and ask for a mover and a secondary.
Okay, so be it. I'm asking for someone to move to put on the floor, please. Counselor Pringle, second by Deputy Mayor Carlton. Is there any other discussion on the motion before? I cannot see everybody, Madam Clerk, so I assume there's nobody. We take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, there was no indication of any further questions. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion as presented. Counselor Carol Barfoot? Counselor Carol Barfoot? Counselor Kathy Markoburn?
For.
Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Counselor Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries. And just for the record, it appears we have lost Counselor Barfoot. So I will work with her to get her reintegrated to the meeting.
You're welcome, Councilor Thompson. Moving on to agenda, we're down to the Infrastructure Canada Community Culture and Recreation Infrastructure Steam Grant Announcement. Mr. C O, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to provide Committee of Council and our residents with a brief update on the exciting announcement for Georgian Bluffs. On Thursday, April the 8th, the federal and provincial governments jointly announced funding for the community for community and recreational projects in central Ontario, including a project for our very own Kemble Community Center. We're very thankful for the investment from our government partners and want to thank them publicly for their commitment to helping make our community healthier, more vibrant, and stronger, and we jointly promote life, healthy lifestyle choices and recreational activities for those of all ages in our community. I know that residents in the area have been patiently awaiting a plan for the facility as it has needed investment, updates, and upgrades for quite some time. The announcement is welcome, used not only to promote job creation, growth, and investment, but also to help promote healthy lifestyles and improve the way of life for our residents, giving them more recreational, cultural, and community choices by both improving accessibility to the facility and improving energy efficiency. While staff now work to properly define the project scope that includes improving accessibility and energy efficiency, funding details call for the following. An upgrade of all entrances, washrooms, and parking areas to make them accessible for all. A new roof. New flooring. New HVAC system. Upgrading the fire suppression and electrical system and increasing the energy efficiency of the building. To achieve these ambitious project goals, available funding includes the following. The federal government is going to be contributing $678,000. The provincial government is contributing $565,000. And Georgian Bluffs will contribute approximately $452,000. Our treasurer is working on identifying the most responsible funding source, and a report will be forthcoming from staff detailing the additional project details, the funding source for our municipal portion, project timelines, and a community town hall to provide the community with additional details and seeking some input into the decisions. While some are excited and thankful for the funding announcement, I'll provide some words of caution, just simply to temper expectations of both committee members and the public. The original project budget was created in 2018 and 2019. As we all know, $2,018 are not worth $1 in 2021 and likely not worth $1 in 2022 when the project will likely commence. $2,018 are perhaps worth about 80 cents today. And with COVID increasing material costs and labor costs, a dollar in 2018 in the construction and materials industry is likely closer to 70 cents in 2022. So we'll need to take very, a very close look at the budget and the project scope and align them properly. And no surprise to anyone, the facility is tired. It's very tired and would have warranted a review a few years ago. Without getting too technical, like people, as facilities age, there are a few types of obsolescence that causes properties to lose value and demand a full sum review of their future. You have function, functional obsolescence, which occurs when a property no longer serves its original intent. For example, design, the building style, the size, the outdated amenities, changing technology. All of those factors may contribute to making a facility functionally obsolete. Kemble was designed to be a hockey and a skating arena. It no longer functions as an arena. So trying to adapt it now to other uses is going to be difficult and costly. Physical obsolescence occurs when a property has not been managed properly and physically and financially neglected. Now resulting in a massive financial investment to bring it back to a usable state. Kemble has required significant investment for years and to help transform it into a multi-use facility as the ice hockey and skate and ice skating program was removed over a decade ago will be costly. Economic obsolescence, of course, occurs when property lose their value due to external factors such as reduced population, reduced participation demand, changing popularity of desired amenities, demographic changes, et cetera. So part of the equation for recreational and community amenities in the area demands a full review of the demand, the desired amenities in the community, community engagement, and costs. With sports fields up the road and some township landholdings around the area, a comprehensive plan needs to be developed for the future. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to reiterate that we are both excited and grateful for the funding, and we're now prepared to move this long overdue project forward with the expectation of creating some long-term multifunctional space that's both accessible for all ages and energy efficient as well. So I hope the community is equally excited. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Al, I really appreciate that. Does Committee have any questions for C O? It's great news. Been a long time coming. We haven't been able to announce this project for a long time, waiting for approvals, and we finally are able to do that now, which is great. We look forward to collaborating with our political partners to increase recreational opportunities for all ages throughout the township. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to point out that Counselor Barfoot had unmuted herself, therefore would like to make a comment.
Well, go ahead, Counselor Barfoot.
I'm sorry, Mr. C O. I missed part of your presentation. I'm having a lot of internet problems out here. I sort of hang my head in shame when I heard your report because I have watched this facility deteriorate over the years almost at a shameful rate. The people of the community worked hard to make sure after the old curling rink could not be refurbished, that they had some recreational for not only the children, but the older generation as well. They worked hard. They got winterio grants. It was a real proud part and a product of the community. I know it's gonna cost money and I'm ashamed that council has sort of let it go over all these years. There's lots of things that could have been, you know, used for within the last 10 years, for example. I don't know how many times I heard about pickleball, but I haven't, do we have a pickleball court in there yet? I don't know. You can answer that. I haven't been there since Lions Club always put on the Santa Claus parade. So I don't know. There are some things, and it seems to be, we pay a lot of lip service, but we're not real big on delivery. I didn't even know what pickleball was, and yet that was the thing. Y'all, we should get pickleball. We should do this. We should do that. What did we do? Nothing. And this has been the story for years and years, and it's been council's decision over the years, not just this council, to not spend any money on it. Why would we spend any money on it when we've got Shadow Lake? Shadow Lake gets all the money. Killscythe got all the money for a few years. But now all of a sudden, Kemble? Nah. We'll just, you know, I think back to what our previous mayor, one of our previous mayors has said. We're getting to be a township that's known for, if it's gonna cost money, close it. If it's a road, it's gonna cost money, close it. If it's an arena, do something different. I'm getting a little bit ashamed to see what's gone on and that council has allowed it. So. Sorry, Kemble Arena has always been very near and dear to my heart. We have a lady down there. You know, she was adamant. She put on things for the kids in the summertime. I can't help but think when Susan Nelson was just speaking, no one spoke up and said, well, you know, how about Kemble Arena? Maybe we should get ahold of the lady. And I can't remember her name now. Take you to her house, but I can't remember her name because she works with children. So much so that she was using part of the church. When the church was under renovation, I understand she did have the kids up to the arena. But you know, people like that should be notified of this as well. Anyways, that's my two cents worth for all it's worth.
And thank you, Counselor Coburn, or Counselor Barfoot. You, sorry, good comments. The only thing I'll say, Counselor Barfoot, is that this council is trying to correct something that happened in the past, and we're trying to bring it to a more viable use facility. And we're doing everything we possibly can, which we have in the last year or so, to try and make that happen. Unfortunately, it's in the political world, everything goes very slow, and we are trying to correct what happened in the past. We're moving forward in the future now. Does council have any other questions?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just to prove to you about how much interest there is in that facility. When it didn't have a fridge there anymore, guess who rounded up a fridge? A ratepayer in the community. When the stove bit the dust, another ratepayer rounded up a stove that was only a year old. So there is interest in keeping it going, but you gotta give the people a chance to get involved. And sometimes during this discussion stage is the best way to do it.
It appears that Mayor Burley has frozen. Counselor Coburn, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Barfoot. I'm sorry, you're cutting in. I understand what you said. Go ahead, Kathy, go ahead. Counselor Coburn?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I don't disagree with anything Counselor Barfoot has said, I, I hope that we can all hold on to the excitement of, of hearing this good news. We have a master, a recreation master plan that guides us going forward, and I hope that we can stay true to those guiding principles and reallocate, reallocate some of our recreation funding in a way that makes recreation and social activities more accessible to, to all people and to all ages. So I'm looking forward to working with the public and having the town hall and coming up with some, some best ways, I suppose, to use that money moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coburn. I can't agree with you anymore. It, I agree with you 100% is what, is what I'm trying to say. And this council is moving forward, doing everything we possibly can to revitalize that particular building in our municipality. If I see no other questions, I'll move on to agenda. Madam Clerk, I, I see no one else. I'll move forward. And I gotta apologize, my internet keeps cutting in and out, so if I hadn't had to ask your question, I apologize for it. So moving on to agenda, we're down to our staff reports. The first one is finance. I have a recommendation here that the lease renewal for use of Office Phase 203 at the Wart and Kappa International Airport be approved, and that a bylaw to authorize said lease renewal be presented for enactment at the April 21st, 2021 meeting of council. Summon to move to put on the floor, please. Moved by Councilor Southern, second by Counselor Pringle. Madam Treasurer, are you there? Kathy, I cannot see you, but are you there? You wanna speak to this?
Uh, yes, I'm here, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, thank you. The report tonight is to bring forward a request for a lease extension for Ms. Kerr. She currently rents a lease, or sorry, rents a room at the airport for her textile operations, and she's looking to extend for a further year. The details are in my report, but if council would like more information, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Does council have any questions? Motion. Seeing no questions, Madam Clerk, you take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion as presented. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Counselor Kathy Markoburn?
For.
Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Counselor Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, we're down to our next recommendation. That the lease renewal for GBT Incorporated as appended to this report be approved, and that a bylaw to authorize lease agreement with GBT Incorporated. On the floor, please. Moved by Counselor Coburn, second by Counselor Thompson. Madam Treasurer, you wanna speak to this?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject for one moment, we lost you while you were reading the second line of that motion. So for the record, if I may, I will read it on your behalf.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So the entirety of the motion reads as follows, that the lease renewal for GB Tell Incorporated as appended to this report be approved, and that a bylaw to authorize the lease agreement with GB Tell Incorporated be presented for enactment at the April 21st, 2021 meeting of council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for pointing that out. Madam Treasurer, you wanna speak to this?
Yes, thank you. So we own a tower at the airport, and for the last several years, GB Tell has leased GB Tell has leased that tower from us to put some internet equipment at the top of the tower, and they provide internet services to our residents in and around that area. So they're looking to renew their lease for an additional five years. And as part of that lease, we also do receive internet services at the airport for free. So, you know, it's a win-win for both us, for GB Tell, and for the ratepayers in our community, as it gives them access to internet services through GB Tell.
Thank you, Cassie. Council have any questions? Councillor Coburn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our Director of Finance. Because this lease extension is a little more than the last one we looked at, do you see any, and I do see the benefits of extending that lease, of course, do you see any potential conflicts with this particular lease if we move forward in any particular direction with the outcomes of the airport feasibility study and future partnerships?
Cassie?
Yes, thank you for the question councillor Coburn. We do have the right to terminate the lease with notice. I believe in this agreement, it is 90 days. So with written notice, we can end this lease if the direction of the airport changes, and we no longer wish to be involved in this partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we see any more questions from council? Councillor Sullivan, go ahead. Your hand is up. Okay, sorry. Great for you. Madam Clerk, you take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion. Councillor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Councillor Kathy Moore-Coburn?
For.
Councillor Paul Sutherland?
For.
And Ryan Thompson?
For.
Councillor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I assume there must be a storm coming in because my internet is going every way you could possibly think of. So I'll move on to agenda and see what happens. We're down to our next recommendation, that the committee hereby supports revising penalty amounts applied on March 2nd, 2021 to tax accounts that were not in arrears prior to February 24th, 2021 installments, and further that-
If I can just interject for one moment, we have missed one report. We are on agenda item 18, or sorry, 8.1.3, being the airport lease renewal with fired up at Grilled in Action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I guess I was pushing too fast. Apologize. Okay, our next recommendation is the air lease renewal. That the lease renewal for Far Up Grill in Action for use of the restaurant at the Wharton-Keppel International Airport as appended to this report be approved, and that a bylaw to authorize the lease agreement with Far Up at Grilled in Action be presented for enactment at the April 21st, 2021 council meeting. Someone to move to put it on the floor, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Carlton, second by councillor Coburn. Madam Treasurer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is our final lease renewal of the night. This is to extend the lease for the restaurant. So in the original lease agreement, there was an option for extension, and we were notified by the tenant that they would like to enact that option. So the terms of the lease have not substantially changed from the previous lease, except for a few minor adjustments. One being, we have removed or altered the exclusivity clause, in that if council supports a event at the airport through resolution, other food vendors can attend the property and provide services for that event. So that is one change that was made. In anticipation of a question that might come up, there is a six-month written notice for termination of this lease. So again, if the direction of the airport does change, we are able to terminate this lease. The reason why it is a bit longer is because it's a bit more difficult to up and move a restaurant, so it was agreed upon that six months would be reasonable notice. And if there's any other questions of council, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Cassie. Councillor Coburn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our Director of Finance. I noticed that there's a clause in there regarding negotiating an outdoor patio space. Is that new in this current lease, or has that always been in there?
Thank you. Yes, that is new. So basically, there's quite a few steps in developing a patio space at the airport, and the first one being approval from Transport Canada. So we're looking to see if Transport Canada would even approve a patio on the airside of that facility. If they were to approve it, then negotiations would commence of potentially building a patio area there. Again, that'd be subject to council approval.
Okay, thank you. That was through you, Mr. Mayor, again. That was my question. Are we obliged to approve the spending for an outdoor patio if permission is granted for that patio to exist? But you're saying that we're not, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you councillor Coburn. Councillor Barfoot, I seen your hand up once, I believe.
Councillor Barfoot, you are muted.
Yes, you did, Mr. Mayor. I had the same question as councillor Coburn, so thank you, Cassie.
Thank you. Does council have any other questions? Madam Clerk, I see none, so you take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion. Councillor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Councillor Kathy Moore-Coburn?
For.
Councillor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Councillor Ryan Thompson?
For.
Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, now, one-time relief penalty. I have a recommendation here, that the committee hereby support revising penalty amounts applied on March 2nd, 2021 to tax accounts that were not in arrears prior to February 24th, 2021 installment, and further that committee encourages ratepayers to utilize electronic tax options available from the township, including electronic payments, electronic receipts of tax bills, where possible, to reduce the township's reliance on Canada Post. Someone to move and put it on the floor, please. By councillor Sullivan, second by Deputy Mayor Carlton. Madam Treasurer, you want to speak to this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as detailed in my report, tax bills were prepared and mailed out to our residents the last week in January, and those were the interim tax bills with our standard due dates of February 24th and April 24th for the first two installments. After we applied penalty and interest on overdue accounts on March 2nd, we started receiving a number of phone calls from ratepayers saying that they did not receive their tax bills. Township staff reached out to Canada Post locally, and they informed us that basically when we take the tax bills to the Owen Sound post office, they are then shipped to Mississauga for sorting and distribution. We asked them if any errors had been identified in that process, and they could not confirm anything to us. The information we got from them was that if ratepayers are having difficulty receiving their mail, they're to contact Canada Post directly. We received an abundance of calls from ratepayers on this issue, and we know that on our end, all the controls were met to ensure that all the tax bills were sent out in a timely fashion. So because of the abundance of calls that we've received from our ratepayers, we're recommending a one-time waiving of penalties on overdue accounts. And this would only be applied to counts that were current and in arrears, meaning that they only missed the February 24th installment. If they had an outstanding balance prior to that installment being due, they are not getting any waiving of penalty and interest. Again, we want to emphasize that this is one-time relief. We keep our tax due dates the same each and every year to try to provide some consistency to our residents, and we also provide quite a few electronic measures to make payments and to receive your tax bills. So for anybody that's called the office to complain that they did not receive their bill in the mail, we have been encouraging them to go on our website and sign up to receive your tax bills electronically. On the flip side, we'd also really like you to make your payments electronically so that we can eliminate any reliance on mail or outside factors to receive your checks. Again, open to any questions from council.
Thank you, Cassie. Does council have any questions? Councillor Barfoot, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Cassie, for the report. This sounds familiar. We've gone through this before with Canada Post. Where all these, a lot of these people from the same area, because that's what happened before. The ones that didn't receive their, that say they didn't receive their tax notice seem to be all from the same area. So I'm wondering if that's the problem, because if it is, I think Canada Post's attention should be drawn to this. This is not the first time that Canada Post has lost, and I think it was several tubs of mail before, and we ended up in a real jackpot over that. So I know it's a lot of extra work, Kathy, but I think, Cassie, I think if they're from the same area, this is definitely a Canada Post problem, and I don't know who you talk to about that, but I don't think we should roll over and play dead on it. I feel for the people that were honest enough to step forward and say what happened.
Thank you councillor Barfoot. I want to turn it over to the CAO just for a minute because I get many, many calls on this particular item, and I turned them over to him, which he handled them very quickly and efficiently. Al, want to go ahead and speak to it?
Sure, I can take the first stab, and then Cassie can certainly correct me and add more to it because it was her and her staff that really got the brunt of the calls. And, you know, it was unfortunate. I can confirm that from the phone calls that I received, the vast majority of them were related to one specific area in the township, which led us to believe that there was either a bin or something that had gone missing. It isn't, this wasn't a decision that we made lightly. We gave it a lot of thought, but unfortunately, you know, the resident or the ratepayers on one end, we're on the other. Canada Post is the person in the middle who's trusted with delivering those tax notices, and clearly something went amiss this time, and we're going to do the one-time relief. But we are also going to engage in a bit of a communications program to try to encourage as many ratepayers as we can to get to electronic notification. You know, as Cassie, our treasurer, has said, those dates are cast in stone year after year after year, so it might be also a reminder to put in their calendars that tax bills are due on specific dates every year. So we're going to do our very best. COVID, of course, added a little something. When we started to do some research with Canada Post, knowing that the mail actually went to the Mississauga processing station, if you recall, that was the processing station that did have an issue with some COVID cases, and there may have been something that contributed to that batch of mail not going to its final destination. We don't know what we don't know, but unfortunately, I think this is something that we need to do for our ratepayers. There were just too many calls from the exact same area with the exact same complaint, so I think this is the right thing to do. But as our treasurer has noted, you know, this is something that, and it comes with a lot of cost to us, not only in terms of lost revenues, but also manual costs, because our system is such that all those reversals of penalties and interest have to be done manually. So it was something that Treasury staff were prepared to do, but it isn't an insignificant cost for us to do this, but we believe it's the right thing to do. And Cassie, you could certainly add something if you'd like.
Thanks, Al. Cassie, go ahead.
Thank you, Al. So Al is correct, it was in a particular area, but the unique thing was, was that this area is heavily cottagers. So it wasn't like it was just people in one specific postal code not receiving their tax bill. It was throughout Ontario. Their properties were just located in the same area. So we do feel that a bin may have been replaced or misplaced. We have heard reports that when people receive their statements, over a month later, they receive their tax bills on the same day. And we have seen at our offices that sometimes it's taking four weeks after something is stamped with postage to be received at its destination. So yes, this is going to be a manual burden on Treasury staff, but we recognize, you know, that it really wasn't our ratepayers' fault that they didn't receive their tax bills, but we would encourage everyone to sign up for electronic bills going forward.
Thanks, Cassie. If you prefer, I'll go to councillor Sullivan. I will give Canada Post no praise of any kind. The way I received my mail at my residence is just unbelievable. It's not very good service. Councillor Sullivan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've thought about this one for a while now, and in my opinion, I feel that, you know, financially, our taxpayers are out money. I'm not sure if this also includes the postage cost, if we're going to get an additional refund for some postage costs. I see Cassie's got roughly $7,500 in statement fees and penalties, not including staff, Treasury time. Is there any way that we should be forwarding, or any thought to forwarding a bill to Canada Post for this inconvenience for our staff and our residents?
Good point. Cassie, any comment?
So I have reached out and spoken with Canada Post, and the comment that I did get was that, you know, our individual ratepayers would need to contact them if they did not receive their mail. So I am going to ask our CAO to speak on that comment.
And Al, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor. I think it's something that would certainly worthy of exploration. I mean, we can certainly speak to Canada Post and see what our options are. I'm doubtful that will be successful, but at least we can plant the seed with them that we're dissatisfied that this appears to be something that is a constant issue, or it has been in the past. This isn't the first time that we've received these complaints, so at least we can put them on notice that we're not happy, and we'd like to see what they can do. Maybe there is a program out there, but we'll certainly explore it for sure.
Thanks, Al. Councillor Barfoot, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Al, for your comment. You word things so very nicely. I'll cut to the chase. How many other municipalities in Ontario or in Canada are dealing with the same type of problem? I think we should make other municipalities aware of what is going on and the extra cost, and go after them as a group, not as one municipality. I really fear, we've been through this before. You can talk to Canada Post, be prepared, it'll probably happen again.
Thank you councillor Barfoot. Hopefully it doesn't happen again, but good comments. Is there any other comments from council on this particular motion? Cassie, go ahead.
Thank you. While we're on the topic of taxes, I just want to make one last plug for anybody listening tonight. Your next installment is due April 24th, which is next week, so if you haven't paid yet, please do so.
Thanks, Cassie. Well put. Madam Clerk, you take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Counselor Kathy Moore Coburn?
For.
Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Counselor Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
And?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you. Moving on. Again, we're down to the Building Department. Swimming pool fence bylaw. I have a recommendation here that report C B O two twenty twenty-one oh one, swimming pool fence bylaw be received and that all previous bylaws governing and regulating use and replacement of fence and approximately swimming pools be repelled and that the draft swimming pool fence bylaw, as amended to this report, be approved and that a bylaw be, to adopt the draft swimming pool fence bylaw be presented for enactment at the April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting of council. Someone to move to put it on the floor, please. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Barfoot. Mr. C A O, Tim, are you here? You want to speak to this?
Yes, your words. I'm here. And the bylaws basically been improved, in my opinion, substantially, because now we have, within the bylaw, virtual assistance for the people that are reading the bylaw. So they have a better understanding of what's being expected of them. And we certainly, you know, are here to answer any questions people have, but it certainly reduces and will reduce the number of calls that you get in regards to, you know, misunderstandings or interpretation of the bylaw. So, and I'm open to any questions if anybody has.
Thank you, Tim. Madam Clerk, hopefully everybody could hear Tim. Okay, Deputy Mayor Carlton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you to Mr. Lewis. Just a question. I noticed that you're ensuring that this covers everyone in the municipality, that nobody gets grandfathered in. How do you propose going about sort of getting all of these people who maybe aren't in compliance now with the new bylaw? Is this just going to be on a, say, if a neighbor reports? Or I'm just curious as to how it's going to get implemented and enforced. Thank you.
Sure. Enforcement broadly within the municipality, we try to be consistent, okay? And treat everybody the same. So we don't, unfortunately, have the resources to drive around and check out every property, see if they have a pool and whether they're complying or not. But if there's a complaint comes in, or if we happen to be driving around, you know, we will stop and rectify or see if we can get the situation rectified. This is one of the few bylaws, as you know, property standards by law, unless we get a complaint for but this is a safety issue, okay? So if we see it, when we're driving around, we will. It's one of the few cases where we would make the exception. And I, the example would be if there was a pool that wasn't fenced, right? And there wasn't a lock or a gate on it. We'd see that, of course, we would stop and, you know, educate the homeowners that, hey, you know, you need to do something about this, you know? Please comply for so many days, right?
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Yes, thank you. That answers the question, and I think it is a really good thing to have in place for security reasons. Just, we had a pool at one time, and yeah, you want that fence so nobody can get in there. So thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any other questions on this motion before us? Madam Clerk, I see no one else, so you take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion as presented. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Counselor Kathy Moore Coburn?
For.
Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I request that once this bylaw comes before council on April twenty-first and is passed, that the township send out this new bylaw to all the pool contractors in the area, just to make them aware of the updates and all that stuff? It's just, I think, a good thing for us to do. Okay? So I'll move on the agenda. We're down to our weatherman, I mean, our operations. I have a recommendation here. Report O P S twenty twenty-one seventeen, speed limit reduction Dawson Road be received and that the speed limit on Dawson Road from Sarawak Keppel Town Line to the dead end be reduced to fifty kilometers per hour from the existing eighty kilometers per hour and that a bylaw to amend the speed limit be presented at the April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one council meeting. Someone to move to put it on the floor, please. Moved by Counselor Sullen, seconded by Deputy Mayor Carlton. Director of Operations, Steve, you want to speak to this?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. So we received a petition back in December of two thousand and twenty. Eighteen residents signed the petition to have Dawson's, Dawson Road reduced on speed limit of eighty kilometers down to fifty kilometers and also installation of children at play signs to be installed as well. The cost to do this is going to roughly be about five hundred dollars for the signage and the installation of our staff time to do it, to as per the O T M manuals. We did do a full comprehension review of Dawson Road from Sarawak, the Sarawak Town Line there to the dead end. We did find that there are some portions of the width of the road are at four meters, and then it varies off to four point nine five, and then it kind of varies back down towards the bridge at five meters, and then kind of goes up and down throughout the whole road. So the average width of the road right now is at four point nine five. It is a surface-treated road. Currently, it is unposted, so underneath the Highway Traffic Act, it is an eighty-kilometer zone road as per the Highway Traffic Act, so we are looking to get council's endorsement to reduce it down to fifty and to have the signs installed and also the bylaw passed at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Steve. Does council have any questions? While everybody's thinking, I have a question. I think I know the answer, Mr. Director of Operations, but I'm going to ask anyway. For consistency, why would the speed limit not have been reduced from the county road right into the dead end?
So upon review of Kimball Rock Road from, so Dawson Road connects to Kimball Rock Road and then also to Sarawak Keppel Town Line. That section of road is a goods and movement road, so that is still going to stay at eighty kilometers an hour for this time moment, as the petition was only for Dawson Road from Sarawak Keppel Town Line to the dead end. In two thousand and twenty-two, we are proposing to do a full traffic review of all our roads to find out what the proper speed limit should be posted at, so that's why it was not done at this time.
Thank you, Steve. Does council have any other questions? Seen that. Madam Clerk, you take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Counselor Kathy Moore Coburn?
For.
Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Counselor Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on with our agenda, we're down to the Clerk's Department. I have a recommendation here that report L E G twenty twenty-one oh eight, refreshment vehicle use on township property be received and that policy amend O two twenty twenty-one, refreshment vehicle use on township property and associated lease agreements be approved and that the clerk is hereby directed to advertise expression of interest for use of township property in two thousand and twenty-one and that a bylaw to amend existing refreshment vehicle license fees be presented at the April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one council meeting. Want to move to put it on the floor, please? Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Coburn. Madam Clerk, you want to speak to this? And before you start, Madam Clerk, for some reason or another, I only got half a screen. So, but I think you can hear me.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the rest of committee. I have attached this report for your consideration this evening. Council and the township have been issuing refreshment vehicle licenses to refreshment vehicles throughout the township since two thousand and two. Through two thousand and two through to two thousand and nineteen, we issued approximately two licenses every year consistently to the same two refreshment vehicles. Now, as we progress into two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, we do see an uptick in popularity in these vehicles throughout the county as well as throughout the province. So we are seeing more regulations and more licensing procedures throughout the province as a whole. Now, in two thousand and twenty, we permitted one refreshment vehicle to park at the Shadow Lake Community Center on a seasonal basis throughout the summer season. This was permitted as our arenas and our community centers were primarily closed throughout the, a large duration of the two thousand and twenty season due to the Covid nineteen pandemic. So in considering two thousand and twenty-one and beyond, staff have proposed and developed a policy to regulate use of refreshment vehicles on township property. This use will be governed by a lease. There will also be a fee associated with said use and lease. The lease has been reviewed both by legal counsel as well as the township's insurer and has been amended per their recommendations. So as you'll see and included in the policy that we have appended for you this evening, our preferred locations, which we will invite applications to through an expression of interest, our Big Bay Beach area, Bomby Beach Baseball Park slash Indian Falls, Sarawak Family Park, Shadow Lake Community Center, Derby Community Center, Campbell Community Center, and Township Administration offices. The township does retain the right to decide and determine where the refreshment vehicle will be placed on all of these properties. As well, should any refreshment vehicle owner have another idea as to where they would like to park, we're open to those suggestions at this time. However, these are our preferred locations. Along with this, we are proposing an increase in the annual fees. We are quite far behind in what we are charging for an annual license, and we do feel that it's important to attempt to lessen the divide between refreshment vehicles and that of brick and mortar restaurants. So we're looking to make it fair for all while still ensuring our community has access to new and exciting ways to enjoy their weekends and enjoy dining out. So with that said, we are looking at an increase to five hundred dollars for motorized vehicles and three hundred dollars from non-motorized. As that currently stands, motorized vehicles are charged one hundred dollars annually, and non-motorized vehicles are charged fifty dollars annually. So we do have a lot of catching up to do to get those costs up to, you know, a normal fee that would cover the township's cost even in licensing these refreshment vehicles. So with that said, I have appended both the lease and the policy for your review this evening.
Thank you, Brittany. Does council have any comments or questions on the motion before us? I do not see any. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Counselor Kathy Moore Coburn?
You froze there for a second. I think it's me, and I'm for.
Thank you. Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Counselor Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you. Down to your next report, Madam Clerk. Recommendation that report L E G twenty twenty-one eleven, technology upgrades be received and that the purses and highlighted in this report are approved, including voice-over-I P-based phone system and Access E eleven work order management software and that both purses be funded from the modernization grant and that bylaw twenty nineteen forty-seven policy is hereby waived to single-source purchase of the voice-over-I P-based phone system and the staff are hereby directed to commence implementation of both approval purchases and effective immediately. Someone to move the motion before us, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Carlton, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Madam Clerk, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm particularly really excited about this item, so please just bear with me if I get a little overzealous. I have prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation, as I know this is quite a lengthy report, just to help break it up and help us understand what exactly we're proposing here. It has been appended to your agenda, appended to the report as I believe Appendix A, I believe. So just bear with me while I present this. And just confirming, everyone can see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as included in the report, we are proposing essentially a full-scale review and update of a large portion of our current I T technology. So we're doing so on a two-phased system, with phase one being updates to phones and implementation of a work order management system known as Access E eleven. Phase two, which will happen in the summer slash fall slash third quarter approximately of two thousand and twenty-one, will incorporate a public portal into the township website, which will integrate all of our existing softwares. So that would be, you know, Access E eleven, all online payments and the cloud permits, so that everyone can come to the township website and find all of the applicable information and all of township services in one easy-to-use interface. To begin, we'll start with our phase one, which we're looking to implement immediately. First is the phones. So our current system is relatively, well, not relatively, is very outdated. We purchased it in two thousand and fifteen after an R F P process in two thousand and fourteen, and its end of useful life was in two thousand and eighteen. So we are a little bit further behind the eight ball here, and we did purchase it used. And our largest complaint with our current system is that it's unable to provide remote support and remote connection to our workers who are not directly in the office, which is why we're proposing a VoIP system. So VoIP is voice-over-I P, which means all of the phones will come in over the internet, essentially. So if someone calls me while I'm at home working remotely in Collingwood, they can be patched directly through to my cellphone rather than patched through to my hardline extension and leave a voicemail for me to call them back. Rather, they can get ahold of me anytime by simply calling the office and being forwarded to myself. And worth noting, all of the hardware that we're purchasing is universal. So should we ever move to a different voice-over-I P system, we can take the hardware with us. So there's a lot of advantages to voice-over-I P systems, the largest being the remote access to the phone system. So this particularly came about as a result of the ongoing Covid nineteen pandemic and with our shift to having our staff work remotely. So as it currently stands, when a ratepayer calls to speak with myself, if I'm not in the office and directly available to take their call, they leave a voicemail, which I am then notified of. With this system, they would be able to be transferred directly to my cellphone and that way not have to leave a voicemail and wait for my return, so long as I was available to take their call. In the same token, if, for example, the Building Department is out on inspections, they can be transferred directly to our C B O's cellphone and get immediate service to that effect. This is just an example of what we would see in the office of our upgraded hardware. As a clarification, all staff would have the opportunity to either have a desktop or a headset. With the headset, you would take your calls directly from your computer rather than a desktop laptop or a desktop phone. This is what we would see at our reception area. As you can see, the color-coded system indicates who is available, who's in a meeting. As you can see, the color-coded system indicates who is available, who's in a meeting, and et cetera, and this system pulls your availability directly out of your Outlook calendar. So green means available, red means busy, and yellow means tentative. This is what our remote workers would see when taking a phone call remotely. So it is, it's essentially the same. It again is just over the internet. As with anything, there are costs that come with this, being an initial investment of approximately $10,675 in, uh, in 2021. As we have outlined in this report, all costs are being proposed to be funded through the modernization grant, specifically approximately $30,000 of those funds to be allocated to IT modernization throughout 2021. So to be clear, this is not being funded from taxation. This is being funded from our modernization grant. And I would also note that we've identified operating cost savings over an annual basis of 300, of $338.34 per month with a total annual savings of $3,060, which means council would essentially have a return on their investment within the first four years of use of the VoIP system. As included in my report, you'll note that I am proposing to have this single sourced as we have worked directly with Infinity to come up with this system. And as you're aware, we currently outsource IT provisions to Infinity. Therefore, they are aware of our needs and the demands that this will put on our internet and therefore shifting our needs appropriately. So, Mr. Mayor, if we don't have any questions at this point, I will move on to our work order management system.
Is there any questions from the council on this first part of the report? Seeing heads shaking, no, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay, thank you. And just one point prior to my moving on to our work order management system. We are, as indicated in the report, keeping a few hard lines for cases of emergency. Therefore, should a widespread internet outage be, become a reality, we will still have the availability to take phone calls in the traditional sense.
Madam Clerk, a question from the mayor.
Yes.
Great report. I can see why you're so excited about it. I'm just, um, on our emergency lines that we have coming into municipal office, and I believe the Shadow, Shadow Lake. Does that, is that impacted in any way, or how, how's that impacted?
So we are keeping hard lines for cases of emergencies.
Well, that would, they stay there with?
Will remain.
Okay.
Okay. No problem. So moving on to our second portion of phase one, it's implementation of a work order management system. So Access E11 is a work order management system that identifies and prioritizes citizen services complaints and issue management, job assignment and tracking, management compliance reporting, and citizen relationship management, being communication between the citizens and ourselves being, um, the township. So I've included a link to a brief little video explaining what Access E11 is. For the sake of everyone's time, I will leave that to council's perusal to visit whenever you see fit. So just a couple of things to help you understand exactly what Access E11 does and how we're going to use it. So as included in my report, I've outlined a, an example scenario of a pothole being identified on concession 24. So as the citizen, I've identified a pothole on concession 24. What do I do now? Now I have three options, four options actually. So I can phone the township, I can email the township, I can walk in, or I can submit it online. Access E11 takes all of these methods and puts it in one spot, so staff are available, are able to identify and appropriately react to that request. So the citizen, being myself, will say, I will call in. The representative on the other line will log the complaint or log the concern directly into Access E11, which will then trigger a workflow throughout the operations department. The operations department has the opportunity to build in different service levels applicable to different scenarios. So that way, we are able to track how long this pothole scenario has gone unaddressed, staff response times, and communicates directly to the resident at all points, giving them updates on their workflow. This is what we would see internally. This is how we would create a case, how we would log a case. And this is the public portion of the website that anyone would be able to go on to at any point and submit a, what I'll call a ticket for requests or for service that would then be sent directly to staff. This is the response they would get as soon as they initiate a workflow, which basically says, we have, um, received your request for service. This is how long it will take us to get back to you. This is who it's been forwarded to, and we will provide you with updates along the way. So this is the big reason why we're looking at Access E11. Currently, the township tracks on an informal basis. What Access E11 will do for us is it will take all of our incoming calls, all of our incoming issues, track it by issue type, track it by response time, and provide neat visual ways to understand where our services are being demanded and how we are providing said services. These statistics will help inform council decisions in the future and help staff justify requests for, let's say, for example, additional staff members. This will help us justify what we need to do our jobs effectively and to how to best serve the township as a whole. These statistics, again, will be available to council for their review on a regular basis. So as with anything, there is a cost associated with Access E11 being $6,000 in the first year, 2021, and $7,500 in 2022 and beyond. This includes the annual subscription fee, all users, unlimited users, and one-time integration fee and the $500 web portal integration fee, integration fee. The software subscription will be increased following 2022 as we, um, will see a little bit of an increase there. So that brings us to the end of phase two, which, as I said, will be phones and Access E11. Both of those costs, again, will be funded from the modernization grant, which I will move to phase two very briefly, as we haven't started implementation on phase two yet. However, as I mentioned, phase two will look at integrating all of our current existing softwares and placing it in one easy-to-use, user-friendly public interface, so that the town, so that residents of the township or the public in general can come to the township website and know exactly where to go to find all of the information that applies to them. For example, applying for a building permit on cloud permit. We can integrate these different softwares into one space so that people don't have to visit multiple webpages in order to apply for a permit or submit a complaint, et cetera. There will be a cost associated with that as well, but we have integrated that into the $30,000 total ask out of the modernization grant. And that brings me to the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What a great improvement to the way we do business in the township. Counselor Sutherland, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very exciting to see this come forward. I have a question for Madam Clerk on Access E11. Is it just solely for, uh, like road complaints? Or would it also like entail towards, uh, bylaw complaints or, like things of that nature? I just, out of curiosity.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Counselor Sutherland. So Access E11 can be essentially anything that we want it to be. We just have to build it to be what we need it to be. And at this point, the township is not tracking really, really anything on a substantial basis. So for example, in the clerk's department, should I receive a request for a lottery license? Then I can log that in Access E11 as well, and that will track anything that I put into Access E11, how long, uh, my response times are, and we can build those levels indirectly to what our internal policies speak to. So while it will be useful for operations department, it can take anything that we need it to and track it in an effective way.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Coburn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to our clerk. I sure hope I didn't miss this information and asking a redundant question. But I'm going to put myself out there anyway. In terms of accessibility, um, in using this new system, folks, um, who don't have those technological capabilities can still access services in person and through other means.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Counselor Coburn, and yes, you are correct. I apologize, I really flew through everything because I knew we had a lot to cover. But yes, while there is an opportunity to submit any type of application virtually, you may still do so in person at the township office, over the phone, or through email. Whichever you are most comfortable with, we are able to accommodate and will continue to accommodate.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask one more quick question then. So if someone does decide to use the telephone or come in in person, will the staff then transcribe that request onto the system so there's still a tracking mechanism?
Thank you, Counselor Coburn, and yes, that is correct. So this will take a, an investment in staff time and a shift in current culture. So we will have to put the time into it to ensure that we get what we can out of it. As I said, the statistics that we will get out of this system outweigh the time spent putting the legwork in or the metaphorical legwork in to get this up and running. So yes, if I were to call into the township office, the individual call that I takes the call would then log the information in Access E11.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A question from the mayor. Since I'm such an IT expert in the field, would you consider maybe, uh, uh, would I say this, have a wee bit of training for council to make sure we're familiar with it and how to do it in town? Because you might have seven people going out there know-it-all. I was like, really pizza ratepayers in case they don't understand how it's working. Understand what I mean?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the suggestion. As we have all discussed previously, we are undertaking a review of our orientation package as well, which I do anticipate incorporation of these technology upgrades as well. But upon implementation of this system, I, I think that's a great idea. I think we would sit down and look at it and give you all effective training as to help to better inform our public. Um, I do envision outreach to the public as well, just to ensure that everyone is aware of these upgrades and ensure that they are all comfortable or at least willing to, um, learn about the system as well.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That's good to know that. The Counselor Barfoot, I see your hand up?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent idea. Madam Clerk, would you sign me up for that course?
Absolutely.
Madam Clerk, I see Deputy Mayor's screen is all gone, like she's hiding behind a blind. Is it on your screen too, or is it just mine?
Yes, it is on my screen as well. Deputy Mayor Carlton, do you have any comments?
I can see everybody quite clearly, so if you can't see me, I'm okay with that.
Can I have your hand up? Get on. Go ahead, Al.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of both Brian and, and Brittany. They've been, uh, doing a lot of research into available products and, uh, they've, uh, done an enormous amount of work to, to bring this forward to us. I know right now it's difficult to appreciate how this is going to move us forward appreciably, but it is going to move the township forward leaps and bounds. Council will have dashboards available to them to see the, uh, the number of calls that we are receiving, the types of calls that we're receiving, how long it's taking us to resolve those calls. So it is going to take us leaps and bounds to where we are now. And, uh, I know you can't appreciate it just yet, but, uh, just wait and see in the coming months and, and the year, you're going to see, uh, a great improvement in terms of your ability and our transparency in terms of how we're doing things and how well we're doing things. And, you know, I just want to acknowledge their efforts. I mean, all staff are doing a, a great job and working hard. Just wanted to, to really highlight Brian and Brittany because they've worked , uh, really long and hard in exploring all of our options. I, I've challenged them to bring it forward and really move us forward on the technology side, and, uh, and they are delivering leaps and bounds. So I wanted to thank them both.
Thank you, Alan. I agree with all your comments. And again, uh, thank you to Brittany and Brian. It's great to see the municipality jumping leaps and bounds ahead. And it's also showing just how accountable our staff are to the, the general public out there, and that's extremely important. And it's now we found a way that we can show how good our wonderful staff are. So there's no other comments or questions on this report? Madam Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion as presented. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Counselor Kathy Moore Coburn?
For.
Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Counselor Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on further down, we're down to our next recommendation. Still in the clerk's department, I believe. That report LEG 2021-12 amended 2021 council and committee meeting calendar be received and that amended 2021 council and committee meeting calendar as appended to this report be hereby approved. Someone to move to put it on the floor, please. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Sutherland. Madam Clerk, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to provide a brief outline of the report that you see in front of you this evening, as formally communicated to council, we as staff are actively working to appropriately identify administrative efficiencies in how we both deal with the public through our communications, as per my previous report, and how we as council can move forward in, in an effective and, uh, positive way. So in accomplishing this, we have proposed to expand our committee of the whole meetings per month um, in a council committee of the, or sorry, committee of the whole council, committee of the whole council pattern. So procedurally, it is most correct that committee of the whole be a platform for less formal debate, whereas council is to formalize decisions. So as you have already seen in our weekly agenda publications, staff reports are now being scheduled for committee of the whole to permit for this open debate and digestion of the information prior to ratification of the decisions at the following subsequent council meeting. So in accomplishing this in 2021, we did so with the least impact on the existing meeting calendar. As you are aware, the council and committee of the whole meetings are published in the annual calendars that are circulated throughout the township. So we wanted to not add or delete meetings in an attempt to lessen the confusion for the public, whereas we simply reclassified some council meetings to committee of the whole and vice versa. So again, we are not adding or deleting any meetings, simply reclassifying to add to that administrative efficiency that we have formally discussed. So I have appended the amended schedule for your consideration this evening. Should council approve it at their April 21st meeting, we will update all, um, the website, all social media accounts accordingly.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I assume that would update all our calendars to this, uh, um, meeting updates and so on?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions from council or, uh, well, I'll start with the council. Any questions or comments from council? I do not see any, Madam Clerk, so you take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion as presented. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For.
Counselor Kathy Moore Coburn?
For.
Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
For.
Thank you, and that carries.
Thank you. Uh, just a, a, a comical little thing for me, Madam Kirk, is that, uh, this, the great computers we're all looking at, and I see all, everyone's face on the screen, and when I ask you to take the vote, and you're still sitting there shaking your head, no. Anyway, that's just a, a little joke. Moving on, we're down to human resources. That report HR twenty twenty-one oh one. Human Resources Policy BO five Staff Code of Con- Doc be received for information. And that policy BO five Staff Code of Con- like Conduct be hereby approved and that the same be incorporated into existing Human Resources Policy Manual. Summon to move to put it on the floor, please. Moved by Counselor Pringle, second by Counselor Barfoot. Madam H, Chair Manager, Janet, are you here? Are you?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Janet.
Thank you. So at a meeting on October the ninth in twenty nineteen, council directed staff to develop a staff code of conduct policy. So Human Resources reviewed code of conduct currently in place at municipalities throughout Ontario, and these policies were used as a guide to write, uh, this policy for the township. The purpose of the policy is to provide a code of conduct for township employees and to communicate behavioral expectations of them. It will apply to all employees of the township, including full-time, part-time, casual, permanent, and temporary positions. Um, the procedures will be that all reports of misconduct will be submitted in writing to the Human Resources Manager with one exception. Um, thank you to Mr. Mayor for pointing this out, but I neglected to put in a situation that might arise involving the Human Resources Manager. So what I will be adding to the policy, um, before it gets distributed to staff is in quotes, "If a situation arises involving the Human Resources Manager, a report of misconduct should be submitted directly to the C A O." And if a report of misconduct is brought against the C A O, the H R manager will consult with council on how to proceed with an investigation. When a report's received, the Human Resource Manager will begin an investigation. All reports of miscon- misconduct will remain confidential unless, of course, um, we have to disclose information required by law. Results of the investigation will be reported to the employee who submitted the report and to the employee subject to the complaint. The manager will then submit a full report of the findings to the C A O and the manager of the employee subject to the complaint. So the policy will be updated with the revisions previously mentioned related to the procedures for a report against the H R manager. Um, and then this revision will be completed prior to the implementation and circulation to staff. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Janet. Does, uh, council have any questions over H R manager? Counselor Coburn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much, uh, through you to our acting, um, H R manager Janet. Thank you for putting this together. Um, I noticed one, um, um, I, I'm gonna call it an omission. I'm not sure if, um, you would agree with me, but in several places, this document talks about staff um, following proper conduct and, and avoiding discrimination and harassment against fellow employees, suppliers, job applicants, members of the public. And nowhere does it say anything about how they are to treat their council members. Um, given our history, um, some of our history, um, in, uh, regards to that particular point, I'm, I'm wondering if it wouldn't hurt to, to put council in there as well. That would be my recommendation. And then if I may, there's just one small, um, error on page six. Um, the first line ensures is, should be ensure, but that's, that's minor, um, in regards to, uh, how it compares to my first comment. So Janet, I, um, I would love to hear your perspective on that recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Coburn. Sorry.
Wait, Jen?
Yeah, absolutely. We can look at adding, adding a, a piece in about council. I was not aware that that had been an issue in the past. So, yeah, absolutely, we can look at, um, revising it to include council.
Thank you, Janet. Does council have any other comments or questions on the motion before us? Madam Kirk, I see no one, so take the vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I call your name, please indicate whether you are for or against the motion as presented. Counselor Carol Barfoot?
For, with the necessary addition.
That's correct. So just as a point of clarity, this policy does not require adoption by bylaw. The H R manager and the C A O have the delegated authority to circulate and implement this policy as is required throughout staff. So yes, you are correct, Counselor Barfoot. Prior to implementation of this policy, that amendment will be made. So with that being said, Counselor Kathy Mark Coburn?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Paul Sutherland?
For.
Counselor Ryan Thompson?
For.
Counselor Grant Pringle?
For.
Deputy Mayor Sue Carlton?
For.
And Mayor Dwight Burley?
For.
And that carries.
Thank you, Madam Kirk. Uh, moving off our agenda, uh, Madam Kirk, was there any questions come in from the public?
No, there was not.
Okay. Do we, any other unfinished business? Seeing none? A new business? Seeing none? Any notice of motions? Seeing none? We have no closed sessions? Um, council will meet again on regularly scheduled April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one at five P M. As a reminder to the public, council will consider the following. One, a special council meeting has been called to consider the feasibility study for the Warden Capital International Airport on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one at five P M. The meeting will be live streamed to the township YouTube for all to watch. And two, a public meeting to consider motorized vehicle use of Sotheby Heights Water Access Point has been scheduled for May fifth, twenty twenty-one at five P M. To participate, please register with the Kirk. Online public survey will remain active until April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at four thirty. And Madam Kirk, uh, just, uh, to help correct my schedule, I indicated a committee of adjustment on that day. Has that been canceled?
No, so the special council meeting, so that was my error, errors, apologies. The special council meeting has been called for six o'clock directly following committee of adjustment.
Okay, so it'll be six o'clock instead of five.
That is correct.
Thank you. If we know of the business here tonight, I look for a motion to adjourn. Plaid by Counselor Sutherland, second by Counselor Thompson. Control our hands, all in favor of adjournment? The motion is carried. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.
Good night, everyone.